Okay. We have 100. Thank you. Quorum being present. I call this annual town meeting, part two. Back into order. So, given that we are just continuing a town meeting that started last week, the rules will be the same as read last week and I won't bother to go back through them. The -- I will, however, tonight, go over the new assistant moderators and tellers. Actually, we just have tellers. So, the left side will be Lorraine Carboni, right side Leah Fabian, center and stage Anthony Morrison. Voting cards for tonight. Again, I'll just remind you, when a motion comes to vote, I ask you to hold up your green or chartreuse colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you arrive this evening or checked in. And if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there's a counted vote, I'll ask you to hold up your voting cards and keep it elevated until it can be counted. For tonight, the stage is a little different, so I'll announce the stage again. My name is Norman Oral. I'm town moderator. To my left, and continuing, we start with Lillian Drain, town clerk, Rita Garbutt, town administrator, Greg Corbo, town council, Mitzi Hollenbeck, selectman, Aaron Burke, selectman, John Powderly, chairman of selectmen, George Volopoulos, chairman of finance committee, Katie DeRozier, finance committee, Joe Fleming, finance committee, and Ryan Trahan, finance committee. And I would just ask, we have three folks here tonight who are not registered voters, and I'd ask for a motion to approve them to speak. Their names are Richard Maduris, superintendent of schools, Greg Corbo, town council, and Jeremy Peck, superintendent of streets. Do I have a motion to give them approval to speak? Not sure what that means. So, I had a motion down here. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Hearing none, they have approval to speak. Again, I'll remind the audience that shouting from your seat will not be allowed, since I skipped that rule again tonight. So, we will take the meeting back up at Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to cover the cost of contractual obligations upon the retirement of town employees.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to that motion?
Yes. Fairly simple. If a town employee retires, any accrued vacation time and eligible sick leave buyback would be covered by these funds set aside for this purpose.
Thank you. And if you could send a copy of the motion, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no one rising to the microphones, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, Article Five, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article Five, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Six.
I move that the town vote for -- vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 for the purpose of funding the triennial recertification of the town's real estate and personal property in fiscal year 2018 as mandated by the Mass Department of Revenue and any costs incidental or related thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. And you care to speak to this article?
Basically, we just have to do this to make sure that the Board of Assessors is charging everybody appropriately by Mass state guidelines.
All right. Thank you. And we'll take the motion up here. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Seeing no one rise to the microphones, majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the settlement recovery account the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of making repairs to the Assawampstead Elementary School as may be determined by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to the article?
Yes. As you may remember from last week's meeting, Jesse revised their fiscal year 14,000 assessment due for Lakeville and Free Town to the regional school district, which resulted in reducing Lakeville's assessment in the amount of $268,528. The school committee did not vote to revise fiscal year 14 budget, so the town of Lakeville filed a friendly lawsuit against the district for reimbursement in the amount of $268,520. Last year, the town meeting voted to spend $100,000 on the repairs. To date, we have received $268,528 from the region in accordance with our settlement agreement. The Board of Selectmen has voted to spend another $100,000 of this reimbursement in fiscal year 2018 to make some more repairs to the school.
Thank you. And you can send a copy of the motion down. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no one rise, majority vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article Seven, raise your cards. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of updating the town's 2005 master plan and maps, including the hiring of an outside consultant and all work incidental or related thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And would you care to speak to this article?
Yes. We are putting forward an effort to update our master plan. The last time it was done was in 2005. And we also -- part of this is updating our 2012 housing production plan, which will expire this September. We were awarded a district local technical assistance grant from SERPAD, our regional planning agency, for $20,000 to update the housing production plan, which must be completed prior to the master plan. SERPAD is also assisting us with updating the transportation and circulation element of the master plan. The update of the master plan will be done in phases. If the committee needs additional funds in the future, we may submit a request in the future to the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee for funding at a subsequent town meeting.
All right. Thank you. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is, again, a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article Eight, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Nine. Oops. Sorry. Thank you. I just saw my scribbles. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept under provision of Mass General Law Chapter 90, Section 34, in a proportionment in the amount of $377,131.
Thank you. And would you care to speak to that?
This is simply accepting the Chapter 90 funds from the state, which we just plow back into updating the roads.
Okay. Thank you. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your card. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Ten, please raise your card. Seeing none, declare the vote is unanimous. Passing. Article Eleven.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the septic loan program the sum of $11,503.90 for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects: repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including, without limitations, all costs thereof as defined in Section One of Chapter 29(c) of MGL. That could -- I should have brought my glasses. The project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, as well as take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Thank you. Thank you. And would you care to speak to that?
This is just a fund that the Board of Health, the town, has that we lend residents of the town who don't have other means to upgrade their septic systems when they fail, money to make the repairs. We've helped a lot of people over the years with it, and as the people pay the money off, we need to put it back in the fund so we can lend it out to new people.
All right. Thank you. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, majority vote. All those in favor of Article Eleven, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Eleven, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Twelve.
I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning map, as identified in Section 321 of the zoning bylaw, by changing the zoning from residential to business for the following parcels identified below by our assessors' map and parcel number, budding Main Street and Clear Pond Road, beginning from the Middle Borough town line up to Keith Avenue. These are 12 parcels in all. I'm not going to read the map and parcel number, but 20 Main Street, 26, 45, 51, 53, 57, 59, 65, 67, 73, 75, all Main Street, and number two, Clear Pond Road. You can see these on a map. They're all contiguous, or reasonably contiguous. And hearings -- we held hearings on this. The planning board voted to recommend approval. The zoning bylaw review advisory committee had meetings on this, you know, and where the public was invited. They recommended this change to us. Currently, these properties are partially zoned business and residential because of -- because they were zoned that way from back in the '50s when there weren't as many lot lines out there. This can be problematic with regards to property appraisal and permitting. The article provide a greater degree of clarity by zoning the entire parcel business. All current existing residences will remain protected under Section 617, which I really shouldn't have to read because that's part of the law. Of course, they're protected. And any pre-existing -- it really doesn't change anything. It just -- I mean, it doesn't change any of the rights of the property that they had before. It just changes business to the back of the property instead of halfway down the property as it shows on the map. Requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you. And could we have a copy of the motion as read? And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee recommends to approve.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? He did give that, I believe, but I believe in what you stated, the planning board held a meeting, and what was the planning board's recommendation?
They voted favorably.
Could you do it in the microphone just that way?
They voted it favorably, unanimously favorably.
Thank you.
We, yes, for the next seven items, we've held hearings on all of them and we're recommending all of them.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote. I'll go ahead and test. If we have a unanimous vote, that will suffice. If it's not unanimous, then we'll go ahead and do a count immediately just for the record so we make sure we hit the two-thirds majority. But feel free to vote no. It's not a testimony on you. Vote how you would like. But just as a test, all those in favor of Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article 12, please raise your card. Okay. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Article Thirteen.
Okay. Article Thirteen. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 2.0 definitions, to delete certain language shown in strike-through and insert new language shown underlined as follows. In the structure section, any kind of structure, A, any combination of materials attached to or requiring a fixed location on or in the ground. For the purposes of the location of a lot, the following shall be deemed to be structures prohibited within a setback required in a zoning bylaw. Boundary walls and fences, and now underlined as being added, under seven feet in height, and going back to what's the existing utility posts, not over four feet in height for mailboxes and name signs and parking lots. And struck out is, except for parking lots, which are within a building.
Second.
Thank you. The zoning bylaw review advisory committee recommended this change. And there -- currently, there's no limit to fence height in the zoning bylaw other than the general requirement of a 35-foot height limitation for building and structures. This article will align our bylaw with the Ninth Edition of the Building Code that has permit exemptions for fences under seven feet in height. ZBRAC has intended to include a special permit provision for accessory structures within a setback that would include seven -- fences over seven feet. They haven't gone -- the exception for parking lots, which are within a building, is not needed as the building itself is required to meet the appropriate setback. The planning board held a required public hearing for this. We advertised a public hearing and voted to recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. And the finance committee, do you have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak to this article? Seeing no one, again, we'll do a vote. It is a two-thirds required, so we'll see if it's a unanimous vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please raise your cards. Thank you. Put them down. Any opposed to Article Thirteen, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Article Fourteen.
Article Fourteen. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 2.0 definitions, to insert new language as underlined as follows. Setback: The distance between the lot boundary line and the building or structure line measured in the front, rear, and side yards. The "or" structure was added to that sentence. And this is just cleaning up -- this is just cleaning up language. It's very useful to the building inspector. No one else will notice.
And is there a second? Thank you. Okay. And again, the planning board voted to recommend?
Yes. We held hearings, advertised hearings, held hearings, and voted to recommend.
Thank you. And the finance committee, do you have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, again, two-thirds vote. We'll do it by hand to start. Article Fourteen, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Fourteen, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Fifteen.
Article Fifteen. This is going to be a little bit harder to read. I move that the town vote to amend of zoning bylaws relative to funeral homes as follows. Amend Section 4.1, Table of Uses Regulations, subsection 4.1.2, business uses to delete certain language shown in strike-through and insert new language shown underlined as followed. So, what's in there right now is a separate funeral home that's in residential as special permit. Business, yes. Industrial, no. Industrial B, no. And it has mortuary or crematory as a residential, no. Business, special permit. Industrial, no. Industrial B, no. The proposed text is just putting together both of them of the -- or the three of them: funeral home, mortuary or crematory. In residential, it will not be allowed. Business will be allowed. When I say not allowed, it'll be an N. Business, yes. But Y, it will be allowed. Industrial, excuse me, will not be allowed. Industrial B will not be allowed. And further, amend Section 7.4 Special Permits, subsection 7.4.6, to delete certain language shown as follows. And this is the companion to it, to the table of uses. It is striking out funeral home, mortuary, cemetery. And all of the -- since there's no longer a special permit required for it, we don't need a special permit granting authority. And stuff like that. It just -- it's just more straightforward.
Okay. Thank you. And is there a second?
And we advertised and held hearings and unanimously approved or recommended for approval.
Okay. Thank you. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, this is a two-thirds vote, of Article Fifteen, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Fifteen, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Sixteen.
Number Sixteen. I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws relative to mobile home parks as follows. A, amend Section 2.0 definitions to delete language shown in strike-through as follows. They're striking out the entire definition of mobile home park, because we don't allow them. B, amend Section 4.1, Table of Uses Regulations, subsection 4.1.1, residential uses, insert new language as underlined as follows. Residential uses for -- mobile home. And underlined, this is added to it, other than allowed in 8.7.1 and 8.7.2. There's the "other than" are things that happen when, when like if a house burns, you're allowed to -- you get a special permit from the Board of Selectmen to put a trailer there for the time it takes to fix the house, you know, and things like that, for temporary uses of trailers. And the -- it'll be -- well, they're all N's. They're not allowed except under the special conditions where they're used temporarily. Mobile home is completely struck out because it should have been, you know, it was just left over in the zoning regulations for some reason. We don't have them, we haven't had them. D, amend Section 7.4 Special Permits to delete certain language shown in strike-through as follows. And again, all the mobile home and house trailer parks, the special permit, since we're not allowing them, we won't need a special permit granting authority. And E, amend Section 4.1, Table of Uses Regulations, Section 4.1.1, residential uses, delete certain language shown in strike-through as follows. And again, striking out all mobile home and house trailers. So, this just struck out a bunch of stuff that we don't use and we don't want to use and we don't know anyone that wants to use it. And that was the recommendation from the zoning bylaw review advisory committee. And we held the hearings and we approved it unanimously.
All right. Do I have a second? Thank you. And we need a copy of the motion. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, again, it's two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Sixteen, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Sixteen, please raise your voting cards. I declare the vote passes unanimously.
Number Seventeen, Article Seventeen. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 6.0, General Regulations, subsection 6.1.7, to delete certain language shown in strike-through and insert new language shown underlined as follows. 6.1.7. This is fixing a typo. The word that was in question is residence with a CE. It's crossed out, and replacement is residential, T-I-A-L, which is underlined. Any pre-existing dwelling under business or industrial zone lot should be allowed. Rights of uses if a residential district without special permit, as long as all residential district regulations are met. Just a typo, folks.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? And the planning board has voted to recommend. Finance committee, do you have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seventeen, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Seventeen, please raise your cards. Seeing none. Oh. I see a -- is that a no vote?
No, I apologize. I'm good. Distracted.
Oh.
It's been a long night.
We almost went to a count.
No, no, no. No, we're good. We're good.
This is a short night, George. Thank you. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Eighteen.
Article Eighteen. I'm going to read the whole thing because this one's -- it's hard to understand. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 5.1, intensity regulations as follows. A, the first part of it is amend subsection 5.1.3 easements to delete certain language shown in strike-through and insert new language shown underlined as follows. We struck out everything 5.1.3 that was under easements, that was describing easements before. It was talking about general and access easements. This is something that had -- it was controversial at times. It looks like it was modified and approved by the Attorney General several times already. And what will replace -- what is being replaced with is 5.1.3 exclusive use easements. Exclusive use easements where the exclusive use of a portion of a lot has been granted to someone other than the owner of the lot shall not be included in the required frontage or lot area. Exclusive use shall be when someone other than the owner of a lot has the sole right to use a portion of the lot to the exclusion of the owner of the lot. The second part of it is amend subsection 5.1.3 landscape easement. And we just deleted that. The landscape easements is deleted in its entirety. We don't get anyone that identifies any easements as landscape easements, and we don't have a -- nor do we define them in our bylaws. So, it's a so it's a, it's just a term that we don't use anymore. The exclusive use easements, according to the council that the ZEBRAC used and the council that put this together, is, should, should do. Instead of having all these different kinds of easements, this is just going to be one kind of easement instead of multiple ones to argue about. We held hearings. There were some questions, but everyone agreed at, at the end of them, and they, and we recommended unanimously.
All right.
For approval.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a copy of that, and does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you, and any further discussion? Seeing, are you wishing to discuss? Could you come to the microphone if you wish to discuss, please?
I just had a question about the easement in a, in a couple of parts, see if I can do this here. One, this sounds like the type of thing that would only apply to setting up new lots, is that correct?
Yes.
Are these exclusive use easements a common occurrence in the town? Where, where somebody would have exclusive use over another owner's property?
If you could go to the microphone to answer Mr. Zinkowitz.
They have been used, the, in their simplest form over the past, let's say, over the past ten years. There would be half a dozen lots that someone, that someone used another sort of easement which they wouldn't be able to use anymore. If it's, if it says seventy thousand square feet in the use table now, it's going to have to be seventy thousand square feet of property that you use yourself. That doesn't, it won't count, you know, underground utilities don't count against that, you know, and, and things like that, but if you, if you offer someone else some portion of that property, then you no longer will, you know, qualify, you, you won't be complying with the zoning.
Okay, sir, if you could first direct any questions to me, and could we have your name and address?
I'm sorry, I'm Bill McGurk, I live on Cinder Hill Pass.
Thanks.
And I think he, the gentleman almost answered my last question, which was about frontage. So if the frontage is, say, a hundred feet and there's an easement for twenty, does that mean that the property owner would have to increase his frontage somehow to a hundred and twenty feet?
That would mean you don't have the front, you, you do not, you do not.
Again, into the microfain, microphone, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zinkowitz from the planning board. That would mean you don't have, you, you no longer have the frontage.
Thank you very much.
All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, can I add to that?
Sure.
My name's Aaron Burke, I was on the zoning bylaw review committee, and just to give you an example of visual, if you look at your card here, the yes is your, your exclusive use as a property owner, the no is your easement, right? The full square is your seventy thousand square feet. With that easement, you have seventy thousand square feet, but you can only use half of it. Well, under, under the way this is set up, you don't have an adequate lot. And the reason this was done was because, in particular, some property along a golf course was developed, and those lots were seventy thousand square feet, but a portion of them was exclusive use easement for the purpose of the golf course using it. So you had a seventy thousand square foot lot, but you as a property owner couldn't go on it. So the planning board wanted to prevent that from happening in the future because technically, while you own that property, you can't use it, and it shouldn't be used for purposes of square footage because they didn't want to see what are, in essence, undersized lots being used for, for development. So the language wasn't necessarily as clear as, as we wanted to see it, so that's why we re, we reworked that portion of, of the bylaw.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, again, it's a two-thirds vote, but we will do it by raising cards to see. All those in favor of Article eighteen, please raise your card. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article eighteen, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. And finally, Article nineteen.
I'd like to thank everybody for the previous ones. That was, I was reading them for the zoning board, I mean, for the, for the planning board because, because the law says we're supposed to do that. The zoning, the zoning board re, what was the name of your committee, Brian? Your committee, zoning? Zoning bylaw review committee. The, they, they did, they did all the heavy lifting on the thing and the, and the, and the drafting. Not everything went through, but it wasn't because anybody was against any of it, it was just that, it just wasn't, you know, clean enough to, to put into our bylaw yet. Now, the, the last one is, is a town way thing, and this again, I'm reading it for the planning board because the planning board does that. This is one of our subdivisions that got started quite a while ago. You know, maybe ten, ten years ago.
Could you read the motion, please?
Yes. I move that the town vote to accept Joshua Lane as a town way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or amendment to make an easement or fee simple in a way, and any related easements as shown in the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Services Incorporated on file with the town clerk as shown on sheets one to three of the plan entitled roadway layout and as-built plan Joshua Estates in Lakeville, Mass. dated May fifth, 2016, revised March fourteenth, 2017.
Okay, thank you, and a second? Thank you. And would you care to speak to that any more than you already have, maybe?
No, it's, it's fine.
Or just explain what, what we're doing?
It's a, the, the road has, has spent its required time waiting for, to be approved by town meeting. It's a, this is the process that's used by, it's a statewide process. The, the planning board has to approve it, the, the town engine, the street engineer has an awful lot to do with it, as part of the inspection process for both drainage and for the quality of the road. And the, and the layout, with a quotation marks, is, it's just an old thing that they've been doing since the sixteen hundreds, is done by the Board of Selectmen. And it's just so, they want to be careful of not having too many roads.
Has the superintendent of streets performed all inspections?
He has, he's, he's nodding his head.
Okay, thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you, any further discussion? This is a majority vote, all those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article nineteen, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. I would ask that people leave their cards in the back table when you leave so we can reuse them, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn indefinitely.
So moved.
Thank you, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes. Thank you for your coming out tonight.